I would like to advise all those present that notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, that notice was published, city website copies provided, the Bergen Record, Alice Special, the North Star Ledger, Jersey Journal also placed on a bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, should be made to the city clerk.
(inaudible)
Roll call, Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Jabour.
Here.
President Zano.
Present.
Mr. Cantaro.
Present.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
President Doyle.
Present. I think first up, we have, we have to open a hearing, thank you, open a hearing with regard to the presentation of the Hoboken Business Alliance budget for 2026. We have, thank you, I'm sorry, I, we're moving quickly. So we'll go through the presentation and then we'll go through council questions, public comments and questions, and then close the hearing.
Thank you very much.
All right, so hi, I'm Patrick Conlon, I'm an attorney, represent the Hoboken, sorry, took a week off. Patrick Conlon, I'm with the firm Skrinsky and Hollenbeck, we represent the Hoboken Business Alliance. I've got James here, who's the president of the board, and he's going to walk you through a little presentation just of what we've done last year, what we're hoping to do next year.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for your time. Just to walk through, overall, we are seeing some great numbers this past year, we, up 6% of our survey respondents, survey respondents have noticed the cleaner streets, our business approval rating has increased over this past year, and we like to say that we are champion for all of Hoboken's businesses with our services, our data and our support. We love this slide, this shows what areas of town, as you know, we are unique, most SIDS are, would just be just Washington Street or just the path, we are the entire Mall Square City, so this represents where our services and budget impact in every neighborhood, every This is kind of the real meat of the presentation, we have a very short one today. We are working very hard to decrease our costs, and while at the same time, some things are going up, that's our increase we're asking for this year, which is basic cost of living increases. We have a staff member who went to full time, some healthcare costs are rising, and some of our annual contract costs, especially with our supplemental cleaning, are going up this fiscal year. On the other side, we are working very hard to tighten this budget, cutting discretionary spending, we are conducting a lot of research in-house instead of going outside to vendors, and we're also delaying some new capital purchasing for the office as well. So as you can see, our public realm spending is going down this year, our economic and community development also going down, marketing is staying the same, and those administrative costs, that's actually just the only thing that's increasing this year. And we have a couple slides we can go through quickly, but really want to get into kind of question and answer period as well. This is what we are very, very proud of this past year, what we will continue into the new year, collaborations with local towns to help spread our budget even wider and faster and more effectively. We work very hard in our events, and we have a new data system called Datify, we love data, so we know things exactly, for example, for the car show, about 12,000 people came into town for the car show that happened a couple, a couple weeks ago, a couple days ago, that was like 158% increase in visitors, and we know that every person who comes into town spends about $75, so that is math I'm not prepared to do off the top of my head, but we have that out, but that is a big influx into business and support for our communities. And of course, we amplify our marketing, a lot of our public art also comes through in marketing, we get a lot of tourism, we get a lot of national and statewide attention as well, to drive tourism and into our town, into our businesses.
Just a second.
Yes.
Officer, Chief, could you guys, could you get an officer in here to quiet down the two officers?
Hi, officer.
Thank you. Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
No, absolutely, we're just wrapping up. So just wanted to also, last thing mentioned, our public art and placemaking, which is a word we love to use in SIDS, it just means that when you walked around down the block, there's a planter, there's a place, you feel like you live here, people want to live here. As you can see, we've really expanded the reach through our reach, we've attracted through our events and our tourism, 21 million visits, that was an increase of 20% visits over the past three years, and we have 32% of the visits come and stay for over two and a half hours, meaning they have lunch, they shop, they buy, and most importantly, they reconnect to Hoboken, so they come back to celebrate those big life moments. Our visitors went up again by 1 million this year, and we have a 12% increase in visitors again over the past three years. So the work we're putting in, the foundation we're laying is working and will continue to work, and with our budget for FY '26, we will continue to do the work, and we'd love to answer any questions or...
So could you just, real quick, for the benefit of the council, could you just compare your budget, you know, talk us through what went on, and could you compare your budget to similar organizations, you know, how much you're spending, how much is increasing, just so they can get a sense of why it's going down, and how it compares to similar organizations?
Absolutely, thank you, yes, we are similarly or actually under budget to similar nonprofit organizations, especially when it comes to the special permit district world, we represent the Mall Square, the entire Mall Square, which is larger than most SIDS, we have fewer staff members than is in the average nonprofit, as well as a tighter budget, we're very hard at that.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Russo.
Thank you. Public realm, could you define that? What is that exactly?
Absolutely, public realm is, well, this is, anything that happens out in the public, any placemaking events, any capital improvements, the...
Economic and community development, could you define that?
Yes, those are more into the events and tourism and anything that attracts people to either come out of their home or come to Hoboken.
And that's going down?
Yes.
Marketing and promotions, that's pretty self-explanatory, and there's no change there, correct? But then this last one, administration, that's just staff and how we administer everything in-house, correct?
Increased healthcare costs, yes.
And that one's going up?
Right.
4%. So it's going up, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So all the things, all the public facing things that we're talking about is either staying stagnant or going down, as far as those things that is the core mission of the Business Alliance, but the administration of everything is going up because we have more expenses in terms of, what is it there, healthcare costs, labor and annual contracts, and growth in staff. So we're doing less, we're increasing staff, we're increasing our costs for contracts, and healthcare, I'll give you, that one's, that one's increasing regardless. But for some reason, that doesn't jive for me, if we're doing less for the community, why are we increasing our costs for all these other things when it comes to the non-public facing?
Not adding more staff, we're the same for staff members as we have there, so that is just healthcare costs, and with that comes just the benefits as well.
So is that bullet, is that bullet point wrong, growth in staff?
Oh, no, sorry, over the, that was over the, the sure we have a staff member went from...
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm reading correctly.
Yep.
And James, we were talking earlier that some of the...
I'm sorry, could you go back one slide? This one right here. In all those headings up top, which one would you say is the third ward?
Probably the hybrid.
A hybrid, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, sorry.
That would be the one with the least amount of benefits, correct?
Fewest.
Fewest, correct?
No.
Fewest amount of benefit?
North Waterfront.
Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, yes.
Year over year since we started this, I've been asking why and how this benefits the third ward, and year over year, I get the same generic answer, everything rises, tide rises, all ships, right? But I don't see anything for the third ward increasing, as a matter of fact, I see everything across the city decreasing according to your own slide. Do you have numbers specific to the increase of business in the city of Hoboken, and when I say business, I mean the actual revenue to those businesses, not the number of visits, the actual revenue to the businesses?
We can, I do not have it off the top of my head, but we do have that, our, nail our data personally, you pull that, based on the, we know who's in town, where they went, and what money they spent on their cards, so we can pull that for absolutely.
Please.
Yep.
Could you go, I think it's two, two slides forward.
Here?
Yeah, this one right here. Supporting Hoboken small businesses year round, it's, that's a great picture, by the way, of Albini's Pharmacy, which is in the third ward, however, I know factually someone was just let go there because their revenue was down. How are we helping that business?
Specifically, that's a great question, I don't know if it's any specific, but yeah, it would be better to answer overall, helping all businesses across town.
I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Mr. President.
Councilman Fisher.
Yeah, just to follow up on one thing I, I think maybe people don't understand, if you go back to the slide that has all bubbles, yeah, do you have, the, the rates across these are different, so for example, were you, let's say, Washington Street, Washington Street top to bottom, it, we've always known that they would get the most benefits, right, it's our main commercial corridor, so how much, what is their rate that they're charged per assessed value, you guys have it?
I do have it, I will have to get back to you on the exact rate, I would be afraid to miss.
Would you say, it's a, so, but let's for argument's sake, say it's 3%, right, something like...
It would be between .02 and .15.
Right, so it's...
For subdistrict, but that's our, the SIDS tax rate for the eight subdistricts ranges to .15%.
Right, so that one's going to be 5%, and the hybrid had like 2%, so they, and this was originally set up for the exact thing that you're seeing, and it's not perfect, but for everyone's benefit, not every commercial property is being charged the same rates, they really were charging a lot more for the properties that get more of the direct services, so if, you know, when, when Armando Luis was on the board, like, he always talked about how he was Sparrow Liquor, like, he was main and main, he was getting the highest rate, he, he felt he should pay the highest rate, it should be a lot more, and the hybrid was really meant to be what you see the dots on there, you know, kind of providing support for local commercial properties and businesses kind of throughout that area, but not, not charging them, you know, charging them significantly a lot less money, so it's, it's probably helpful to get those numbers.
100%.
So for example, on something like Albini, my guess is, what are they paying, $100, $50, $60 a year, something like that?
Between there, yes.
Right, whereas someone like Sparrow Liquor is paying $3,000 a year.
The staff is watching this and frantically emailing me right now, saying, here's the numbers.
Okay, sorry.
Absolutely.
When you, when you do that breakdown, also include how much service, right, that is, is one thing that they received it, but I don't know that those on Washington Street receive a service only once in comparison to receiving a service only once in the hybrid district, so if we're going to talk all those numbers, I think it's important that we talk about all those numbers, like graffiti removal, how many times in the third ward was graffiti removed, was it once, as opposed to maybe somewhere else, 25 times? I don't know that, this doesn't show me that, but I think if we're going to talk about the dollars, we should also talk about the service and the frequency of those services.
Sure, we can ask our vendor that, sure.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And the, the only other thing I would say for purposes not of this year, but for next year, and I've said it the last couple years, you know, when we did the HBA initially a few years ago, whenever, we, we put it together in 2019 and rolled it out in the 2020, right before COVID, so we're five years in, you know, it was always contemplated that like Gateway North and Gateway South would grow into a higher rate, and it's growing into a higher rate, so it's worth, I don't think you've changed the allocations over the last five years, and I think the thing that you should think about next year is changing those allocations, and if it means lowering the hybrid a little to benefit the Gateway North, Gateway South, and even the North Waterfront, which is filling in as well, it may be time to rebalance them.
We've started those discussions with that board, yes, thank you.
Actually, Councilman President Zano was...
Thank you, Council President. Being that my ward seems to benefit a lot from this, I'm struggling with some of your presentation here. You have three things up there that jumped out at me, 68% clean streets, dog waste stations, and tree maintenance. I just walked up and down Washington Street today, and the tree pits look like garbage. Those nice potted plants look great, but the tree pits look like garbage. We have everybody in town complaining about dog waste all over the place, and I know the stations are empty, and I talked to your leadership, past leadership, that there was something, there was crosswires between the city and the HBA, and I had offered to actually go out and buy the dog bags to put into the stations, and then there was another problem, but we have an outcry from the community in certain hotspots, and the Health Department is doing a very good job of going out and policing that, however, anytime I look near a dog station, the things are empty. Now, I do know that people are supposedly looking after those, and you do it as a, you're a sponsor, however, I never got a straight answer on that, and the problem's gotten worse. And if we're going to say dog stations, okay, you guys are going to tell me you're doing it, I don't think you're doing it. 68% cleaner streets, I will argue to you, it's not cleaner, the power washing job that was done last year was garbage, I could have did a better job, you could have paid me $100, I would have did the whole street, it was horrible, they skipped over things, nobody on Washington Street was alerted, I walked up and down from my ward and through the sixth ward and alerted all of the businesses, they had no clue it was happening, then they prepared and they were calling me, is it coming, is it coming, it was, oh yeah, they came, they passed by you, they did spot checking, they moved stuff, nothing happened there. I've run into some problems where, World Cup, back in February of, I believe, 2024, I sent a letter to the director of the HBA and included the old business administrator, and they said, don't worry, we're taking care of it. Well, you and I have had some conversations, what are we doing? Jersey City's already got their things set up and ready to rock, and we're having conversations. We missed the Super Bowl, we failed on the Super Bowl last time I was here. When I walk into ribbon cuttings, do you know who the HBA is? No. I'm, that's, my job, yes, is for outreach, but that's what we should be doing for brand new businesses, and we're not doing that. So I struggle here when I look at this presentation, I, just, we can walk out the door and look at the tree pits, instead of putting those nice little things on the corner, why don't we fix the tree pits? Why don't we tell the businesses that you're responsible for getting the grease where the garbage sits, because I do not want to go tax my businesses because they put their garbage bags out there, that's something that I believe the Business Alliance should be alerting them, telling them what good measures are. And my one last final question, I'm going to wrap this up with, how much of this can be done by city employees? How much of this work up here could be handled by the, the town? Because it looks like there's some redundancies there that, that exist. That would be my question. If you, if you either have it or you can get back to me.
Oh, yeah, I would, I guess I would defer to the folks who would be doing the work and allocating the budget from City Hall.
Well, I mean, I...
But maybe I don't understand the question.
The can men, the watering, which they do a very good, whoever you, Humphenagle, I think, they bought a nice little tiny little matchbox truck, I call it, that waters the plants every day, you do a good job at that, however, some of the other things on Washington Street just, I don't think it's as rosy as this is being painted, that's my personal opinion, I'm, I've expressed some concerns to you, I'd love to see the Christmas event or a holiday event held near City Hall, I have an older community here with several senior buildings that can't get down to that area, maybe we think about having two, yes, we have a Christmas tree on, a Christmas tree on, on the waterfront, but it should be somewhere closer to City Hall. I'm going to fight tooth and nail for that, we finally got beautiful flowers in front of City Hall, we have some other holiday decorations from different religious things, I would like to see a Christmas tree at City Hall, and I think that's something the HBA should be helping facilitate, because that's helping bring business to town, and if we have, if we can have a glit drop, lighting in the menorah, menorah, we can have a lighting of a Christmas tree in front of City Hall. So, that's my, my couple comments.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, President. You know, one thing I'd just say in response to what Councilwoman President Zano said is that Director Gonzalez is a trustee on the Business Alliance where I served for two years, and I know that the city and the HBA coordinate with respect to the cleanup issues, and that they, I think I'm swearing, yeah, that they coordinate with each other and that they, they try not to have redundancy, is that the right word?
Absolutely.
So that, so that, that is done by design, so I know that that's something on a board level, you know, again, I spent two years as a trustee on the board, that's something that they tried to do, how could one complement the other, we have limitations with respect to our calling contracts, how can the HBA fill those gaps to manage things, and I think that people are probably used to seeing individuals in the HBA vests with garbage cans and sweepers, they're sort of omnipresent, I don't know if that's the right word, but, but, but they're part of the landscape of Washington Street in our business district, and we see them. And sort of to pick up also where you left off, I do think that the floral arrangements that hang, the planters are beautiful, they're well maintained, they add a lot to the business district, the bistro lighting, I think really is something that the Business Alliance started the year that, my last year on the board, which I think is, adds a lot to the nightlife and the feeling of a vibrant business district, which I think is consistent with the idea that we're getting more visitors coming to our community, and I do think that this, that they've done a very, the holiday displays are outstanding, I know, again, Councilman President Zano was critical of, I think, not that he doesn't like it on the 11th Street, I think he just would like it more closer to his ward, which I understand, but I can tell you that having gone to the tree lighting pretty much every year, there are hundreds and hundreds of people who come out with families, kids are participating, and it's a very joyous and great experience, and I think this year was probably the most heavily attended one that they've ever had. So it's not to say that the Business Alliance is doing everything perfectly, I don't think so, but I do think that they have made a significantly positive impact, the organization has been as good since for, I think, four years now, three, four years, it's a relatively, five years.
If you don't count COVID years, where, yeah.
So it's a relatively new organization, but I think that it's established in a way that I do think that the business community is aware that it's there, I do think that, I, I know during COVID, we were very active in terms of helping get grant information to businesses to help get them through this, and we were actively involved with that. So I do think that this community is aware, and maybe that, maybe not every ribbon cutting, you know, that they, they, they are aware what's out there, but I can tell you that I have attended ribbon cuttings, where I've told them, if you haven't been in touch with the Business Alliance, you should, because they have resources that can help you attract customers and get support, and they appreciate knowing that that is there. So maybe, again, I think to Councilman President Zano's point, maybe there could be better coordination with the new businesses opening, I know that we get notices from City Hall when there's new businesses having openings, I don't know if you're getting them, if, if you should, if you're not, and that's, I'm sure that's something the mayor's office could coordinate with you.
Yep.
But again, I think that the overall picture for our business community, I see, I mean, we have new businesses coming regularly, Hoboken is extremely attractive for businesses, I think that people are proud of having business locations here, franchises like to have a location here as part of their profile and to serve our community, so I, in general, I'm supportive of, of the work, I'm proud of the two years that I spent as a trustee, and I'd say keep up the good work.
Thank you, thanks, thank you.
So James, if I, oh, Councilman Ramos, go ahead.
No, it's, it's fine.
Thank you. Yeah, the, as the council rep, I'm not going to repeat what Council Russo, Fisher, President Zano, or Cohen said, because obviously, we're supportive of a lot of the initiatives that are happening, obviously, some can be done much better, I think Councilman Cohen, President Zano pointed out some inefficiencies there, but one, I think frustration on my, on my behalf and other board members' behalf, HBA board members, has been, I think, council members as well, is how long it takes for many of our small businesses to open up, and one thing that was requested last year, and we're hoping that was done this year, was something of a document of what we could do, adopt zoning, a new zoning law that would help small businesses open up a lot faster, a lot sooner, and that document hasn't, hasn't come up yet, and I know the director's leaving now, but it was always, it's coming, it's happening, it's coming, I think that was a frustration, not just for myself, but for other members as well, of, of the, of the HBAs, I think we could do a much better job of that this year coming up. I think another area we could try and focus on this year as well, I know I hear a lot of businesses close up early, especially along Washington Street specifically, and you have businesses and residents, and residents, and they're taking their garbage out a little bit earlier, and those residents are being fined for businesses having their garbage out a lot earlier, so if there is like a specific garbage bag that we could give out to delineate business garbage from residential garbage, where residents aren't getting fined, whether it's an orange bag, a blue bag, something that says, you are a small business in Hoboken, here's a garbage bag you should be using, that way residents do not get fined, because that is happening quite often right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we could do, that, that was discussed a little bit this year, so we'd like to see that happen, I think also, my frustration has been like the lack of a signature event that we were hoping to happen, I think, and next year is a huge signature event with the World Cup, and we know teams are going to be staying here, teams are going to be staying in Jersey City, visitors to the games are going to be staying here, and I, I think that we are way behind as far as preparation for that aspect is, for events and planning for next year, it's a lot of competition in the area, everyone's going to try and attract those visitors to the municipalities, and although I think like we have an upper hand just because of our logistics, where we are located, the businesses that we do have, but if no one from Ireland that's going to see Ireland play in MetLife Stadium, or no one from Bolivia is going to see MetLife Stadium, they don't know where to come, we're not going to be at option for them to come to spend their dollars next year, so I think that was a real flashpoint, I think, at one of our HBA meetings, I think that's been frustration, if we could do better with the signature event, and definitely planning long-term, because we know the World Cup was happening for a number of years now.
Yep.
So if we could get a better grasp on that and take advantage of what we have, especially, let's go back, reiterate the garbage again, and I won't repeat what everyone else said, but zoning, the zoning changes as well, that's, it shouldn't take seven, eight months for a business to open up in town, we asked for those recommendations, and that hasn't come to fruition yet, to my knowledge, anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question, James, how are you guys measuring the number of visitors? I think you said it was 21 million over the last three years?
There's a slightly little creepy software that tracks via cell phone track, it's called Datify, and it's, we have a software subscription to that, and so we can know who's in town, all their demographics, anything that's available publicly about them, so we can track all of that.
But you, so you're, you're just looking at the total number of visitors to the city, it's not specific to the programming of the HBA?
It's, we can, we track specific to the event itself, so if, so we track increases, basically like who is here on Sunday for a car show versus who was here last Sunday, so we do comparative.
Okay.
Yep.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Council President, oh.
So, James, I think I saw somewhere in the materials that you're anticipating, you're hoping to get a $100,000 grant this year, which may, am I correct on that or no? I, I thought I saw that you were...
Yes, yes, sorry.
In the trans middle of the budget, yeah.
Oh, yes, 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 thank you very much for this, trying to memorize everything, thank you.
And if the, if that grant did not necessarily, did not come through, you might reevaluate what's going to happen, in other words, the, the budget might be different if it didn't come through, so as far as the impact on the, our community, by that, I mean the businesses, the impact will be less than the increase, that's what I'm asking you.
Yes, and with any adjustments to budget, everything goes through our board discussion, so we would have to have those discussions about maybe which budget lines would be adjusted accordingly.
Okay.
Yes, and with any adjustments to budget, everything goes through our board discussions, so we would have to have those discussions about maybe which budget lines would be adjusted accordingly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, open to the public?
Thank you so much.
Just one observation on some of the things that people have mentioned tonight, you know, we're, we're asking the HBA to like take a lead on something, whether it's the, the zoning changes, I can tell you, because we're on that board, that I've spoken, I'd spoken with Roxanne, and I'm not, you know, I think it may be beneficial if we were to schedule a meeting with the city, the committee, and the HBA, and get everyone in a room, because I'm not sure they're always working on the same, on the same timeline. And something like the, you know, the World Cup, you know, I don't know, Caleb's got a lot on his plate right now, but we're not hearing anything coming out of the mayor's office on the World Cup, right? It shouldn't be the HBA that's leading it, but it should be the HBA, the city council, the administration, like, we should have a World Cup committee, and, and I would hope that the HBA would take, you know, a lead in that as well. But just thinking through, like, how can we kind of embrace, you know, and bring the resources to them if we, you know, sometimes have schisms between our own, you know, our own groups, even something like ribbon cuttings, you know, we're, we're getting invites for ribbon cuttings now, but it was like three years where none of us got invites for ribbon cuttings, nor did the HBA. So I think there's a way that we should just acknowledge, working maybe a little bit, all of us together, to get the most out of it on some of these important initiatives.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Turning to the public, I don't, we don't have to close, this is not our portion, we can always chime back in. Rosemarie Markle.
You're on your game again, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about the Business Alliance, and I think everyone should reread their guidelines because this is the sixth year in, and they have supposed to be started to be self-funding within the second year. To date, they've raised $0. I'm here to talk about the portion that I have to pay as an apartment building, even though I've been told several times by Councilwoman Fisher that I am a business. If I'm a business, then maybe the lawyer can take me out of rent control, because I don't see how we get two bites of the apple. One quarter of the properties that are forced to pay this tax that receive absolutely no benefits are a quarter of them are 4C apartment buildings. I don't know how, how any of you justify that, but according to the Cid, we're supposed to get a direct benefit. I haven't gotten anything in six years. So far as the cost going up, I was at the last meeting, and there's six directors that are now employed in the Business Alliance, that's 29% of the budget, totaling $714,000 in salaries, $128,000 in benefits. I, I feel like I'm supporting two city halls. In the last meeting, they hired a law, a law firm, because somehow or other, I guess there's another lawsuit, some things never end in Hoboken. There's no proof that art projects and murals have people shopping. I heard Mr. Runcle say that everybody spent $75. I wish he could explain that to all of us. They follow everyone in the store and check their credit cards. The Business Alliance is handing out $5,000 in grants right now to businesses that have suffered loss during the water main break. Yet apartment buildings get what? Nothing, we just get to pay. The cost of rent and utilities has gone up $25,000 in one year, $70,000 of that for rent, which is paid to a board member. You really can't make this up, now can we? $8,000 in travel expenses, I'd like to know where, but alas, these documents are really not for the public eye, even though it's tax money. In the backup document, it says one property owner applied for hardship case and it was denied in six years. I don't think anyone even knows that you can apply for it, and why would they? If you want the details, you can call me. I was the owner that applied, and because I had a little bit of money in my checking account, I, I was denied that hardship case. Since this tax has now just rolled into your property tax bill, most of people don't even know what they're paying for it. It's this little figure on the side that you have to start reading into your tax bill on the first, the first quarter taxes. All this money in vacant storefronts all over town. I'm, I'm here to ask again that the 4C apartment buildings be taken out of this, but I'm sure I'm standing here just blowing air into the wind, because you're all going to say no. And in closing, I'd like to say, the hypocrisy of the council members and mayor, mayor and candidates crying, we need affordable housing and stop these atrocious rent increases, yet will gladly approve another tax is mind-blowing. You have one property paying $153,000 to the HBA. Do you think that they're going to just swallow that? No, they're going to pass it along. But again, the 4C, poor small landlords, we're not even allowed to pass it along, and I understand it's only 0.05%, but I don't care if it's $20. I should get something for, for you extorting my money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Markle. No other members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
All those in favor? I should point out, I, I think we might want to suspend the agenda, even though it's pretty much the next thing on the agenda, other than the municipal budget. Going to A1 now and, and voting on the resolution adopting this budget?
Council President?
Yes?
Could we hear number one first on the changes to the Improvement District?
Here, oh.
Second, I'm trying. I don't think we can.
That one.
That one looks like it's on.
Yes, that's the one that was properly noticed, or timely noticed, I should say. Yeah, that's fine, then, then we'll go to resolution authorizing and municipal budget to be read by title only, if we're, if we're not going to go out.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Farina?
Excuse me, F1, Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Well, yeah, no one has signed up for this, right?
No.
Okay.
What are we?
Just by title, that we can read it by title.
We don't have to read the entire budget, word for word.
We already did that, didn't we already do this?
No.
Yes, I thought we did it.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Yes.
It's.
It's a yes.
Just reading it.
Yes.
That sounds like a yes.
Y E S, yes.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Public hearing for the CY 2025 budget.
Do we have any?
It looks like there's, no one has signed up.
What are, what are we doing?
This is, just, we're here, there's a hearing on the budget, and.
That's fine.
And it's blank, so no members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe this would be a good time to discuss the efficacy of a special meeting with regard to the budget. It would likely be a Zoom meeting. Well, I think that may not work for everyone next week, or, I mean, I'm intrigued by whether we have a reason to meet. It would be nice to think that we'll have something to vote on.
Council President, I reached out to the chairman of the Finance and Administration Committee, asking for a subcommittee meeting specifically about the budget. We're going to try to do that tomorrow, correct?
Tomorrow, yep. I think, at least for me, I'll have a little bit more clarity as to where we are. I don't know if it's, if it makes sense to try to discuss when we should have that meeting. I do plan on having some discussions about potential amendments, and I don't know what the rest of the committee will say, or what they would want to do, but at some point, I think we, as a subcommittee, should have that conversation before we move into just a vote for the budget.
Okay, well, I think I've heard that Wednesday is not good, Thursday is the, what's, I don't have a calendar in front of me, 27th?
26.
26.
26. I mean, we could, I, I mean, I hate to go through the expense of noticing it and then canceling it, but we also, Councilman President Zano, could handle a couple of the matters.
That's what I'm hoping, if we could do that, it would be great.
If, if we were to do that.
Before the 30th, yes.
On the 30th.
Pardon?
Monday, the 30th.
Monday, the 30th? That's the week of, Fourth of July week.
I'd, yeah, I'd like to push it before that. I'd like to be before that, before the 30th, the date's a special date.
For Marine View.
Thursday, the 26th.
And Jason, and Jason just said we have temporary appropriations and the end of June, I'm sorry, Caleb, just said temporary appropriations come to an end at the end of the month, June. The end of June. So we have to have a special meeting before the end of the month.
Okay.
Thursday doesn't work for me, the 26th.
Why doesn't the 25th work? Because there's a public meeting from 6:00 to 7:00, could we do it at 7:00?
We would do it at 7:00, but Councilman Cohen has a conflict, so we're just trying to work around everyone's schedules.
Do we do the 24th?
I could do that.
Is the 24th going to be soon enough, or?
23rd, I think, if we did it tomorrow, right, so seven days is the 23rd from today, tomorrow you'd have to have it printed.
If we, if we don't have a budget to vote on, noticing it and calling a meeting, it doesn't seem to.
The meeting is happening tomorrow.
Yeah. So it would be multiple special meetings.
I'd rather have one, because the noticing costs, as we discussed.
Well, if we knew we were going to get, I, I'm just concerned about, Councilman Russo, you're saying the, you're, the meeting on the budget is tomorrow you're having?
We're having a subcommittee meeting tomorrow.
I'm sorry, Councilman Cohen.
Yeah, committee meeting is tomorrow.
Yep.
That doesn't mean there's a resolution tomorrow, which means.
No, yep, and I, I would direct all council members to Mr. Director Stratton's memo today with regard to how to prepare amendments to the, which was at all of our seats, how to prepare proposed amendments to the budget.
Why doesn't the Finance and Administration Committee discuss scheduling tomorrow night as part of that and come up with some points of time to share?
Council President, I, I just passed a bunch of questions and my recommendations last night to Director Stratton, and some of it was based upon the past, in other words, what Director Freeman had requested and how to present things. So there's like a little miscommunication there, too.
Well, I mean, is it something where it's like a line item saying?
Oh, well, I was told, don't.
We change X to Y.
I was told, give me the summaries, and so that's what I presented, the summaries to Director Stratton and Director Gonzalez, and evidently they want line items, so.
They want what?
They want line items. So now it's the reverse of what Director Freeman had requested, whether, which, by the way, I do want to give it.
This is prerogative.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do want to say that in this budget process, under Director Gonzalez and Director Stratton, that it's, there has been a lot of transparency, which I do want to recognize, and I want the public to know, that there was a lot of data put together for the council. It was very clear to see, and this has actually been a very positive experience, and coming from me, I hope that explains to the public that I'm, I'm pleased so far. So I do want to give a, a little bit of a shout out to the, the business administrator and the assistant business administrator.
So next Tuesday, no, you said Tuesday is bad for you, Councilman? Next, the 24th?
That's, that's. He said Thursday was bad. Thursday is bad.
Well, then we said, how about Tuesday, and I thought you made a face.
Let me look again.
Jared, can you get it out by Tuesday? You need seven days, right?
Wednesday is, Councilman Cohen has a conflict, Thursday, Councilman Russo has a conflict, so we're now floating Tuesday.
Tuesday, I might be able, if we do it at 7:00, I might be able to make that work.
You don't have a hair appointment, do you?
Only if you do.
Still holding on to that hairline, I know.
Taking it high and tight.
Well, yeah, that's fine, we, we will figure out which ones, I mean, there are.
And Paul.
I get, I get what you're saying, okay, so one, two.
Get whatever you sent to the committee to.
Three, four, five, six, seven.
We'll discuss them tomorrow.
There were nine, one's going back to first reading, one we're going to address next, so.
You sent it to me, I didn't send it to anyone else.
No, no, but you can forward it to the committee, I mean.
Yep, yep.
No, I just have it. You want to distribute it to the committee.
Send it to the committee, please.
For the 24th, okay?
24th, 7.
My brother's birthday.
Do you want to do it 7:00 or do you want to do it early?
How about we do 7:30 to give you a little more time, or?
That'd be, that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you. I appreciate it, Council President.
7:30 on the 26th, 24th.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Farina, so the.
We have a hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 179, Special Improvement District of the City of Hoboken.
Is, are there any members of the public that have signed up to speak? This would be on ordinances for second reading? Well, I guess, seeing as there's only one, Enrique Herrera, I believe, Mr. Herrera, you've signed up for, you have P2, so I'm going to put you on for resolutions, this is the wrong sheet, but we'll, we'll keep you, okay. So no members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Do we have a second? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council members? Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on here?
Your ordinance, did you want to talk about?
B766.
Yeah, just have one question, what was the, what was the change?
Aye.
You know what these are, the changes in general? This is basically the list of all the properties, so like when a property falls off the list or newly constructed, that's the.
Correct, and I wanted, I wanted to make an amendment to remove 4C in its entirety.
Well, I asked if anyone in the council had anything to say, and.
Worried about a, a meeting that you just proposed, I had to put it in my calendar, Council President.
You got to keep up, Councilman.
It's my version.
All right.
I'm a no.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay, we're up to.
The motion, or I should say, the ordinance passes.
Consent agenda.
Right, so consent, agenda?
Public portion on resolutions.
Thank you.
So do we?
Public portion on resolutions.
What?
And, and Mr. Herrera is number one on the list.
Oh, no, we haven't yet.
And, if you, yeah, that's fine. Thank you, sir.
How's it going? Thank you, Council President. The resolution awarding the police department this type of, these portable police radios is a, is a good upgrade. I think we should also look at any type of oversight into how the PBA and PSOAs operate, with oversight involving the police and the police chief at that, and also including the neighborhood watch. I think this is a good step toward giving our police more money, which is better in the hands of police than PBAs and neighborhood watch people who don't really know what they're doing. They just kind of just call the police, they don't really run the, the calls or go, you know, do their jobs or anything like that. The police do the jobs. These PBAs don't really do anything other than just point the finger at people, and that's just my opinion on it.
Okay, thank you. Rosemarie Markle, signed up. CD1, CD2, CC all?
I'll make it quick, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
CD1, it seems like every two weeks that, that salary in, or her paycheck increases. Maybe we should look at hiring as a part-time employee, maybe we'd save some money there. CD2, the Affordable Housing Funds, I could use some of that money, my, my apartments are affordable, can anyone apply for that?
Yes.
Seriously, oh, I can?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, I'll have to.
Yep.
CC, all of them, with the lawyer fees. We've increased the lawyer fees in six months by $225,000. Yet, seriously, we need to start looking into this. CC3, we're going to sue the federal government, maybe you should use your own money. I really don't want to spend, waste my money on that.
It's been removed.
And CC5, the tenant advocate, that keeps going up and up and up again. So it's a resident who's suing a landlord, and I'm... The taxpayers are footing the bill. Somehow, I'm not sure if that's legal, but I guess Hoboken it is. TX1, $27,000 in tax overpayments on this agenda. Last year, $125,000 was paid back to owners for overpayments. How does this affect the city budget? Does anybody look into it? T3, $67,000 for 500 new... Those... I'm assuming those are those white things that are blocking all the corners from people? How many times are we going to replace them? Because everyone, every driver runs them over. What a waste of money. T5, I'm just going to be snarky. A traffic engineer, I hope it's not the same one that's supposed to reduce the traffic in the southwest area during construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Markle. Pat Waiters, Ms. Waiters, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Council President. I'm sorry, I'm just rushing a little bit, I just got here. I want the one CD... There's one on here from Ruben Ramos, for the cops, for the police department.
Which one? I don't know that Councilman Ramos is joining the police force.
Well, anyway, I'll talk about that on the public portion. And Affordable Housing, capital improvements for Affordable Housing. On Washington Street. CD2, that out?
CD2, okay, yep, that's... The former YMCA at 13th and Washington?
This is going to be a grant, right?
It's a... Yeah, donation to a charity.
To repair it?
Excuse me?
What is it for? Is it to fix up the YMCA?
To improve the physical structure of the building.
All right. Okay, I'll talk the rest on the public portion.
I think it's the sidewalk, probably. It's the... You know the sidewalk in the front of the pantry? Just a disaster, and it's breaking. This, I think, is going to go to help that.
But males still live in there, right? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. No more members of the public are signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're to consent agenda. As you'll see, CA1 is carried, and CC3 is removed, and P1 is carried. P1, as in Peter?
Public safety one.
Public safety P1, not P1.
Not parking right.
Oh, it should be PS1 and PS2. Somebody missed that when I was looking at this, I guess. So PS1. Yes, thank you for the clarification. Council members for...
A1 and P1?
Claims, CA4. CC1.
Sorry, did you say TA... CA4?
CA4, Charlie Alpha.
CAI4?
No, C, Charlie Alpha 4.
Okay.
Claims.
Yeah, got that.
Charlie Charlie 1. T2, T3. And I think that does me.
CD5.
CD5. Okay. Mr. Farina, you got... I'm trying to get it in the right alphabetical order. A1, CA4... I'm sorry, CC, Charlie Charlie what, Councilman President?
No, CA4 is correct. CC1.
I get this. Which of the... CC1, okay? And then there was P1, T2, T3, and CD5, which should have been up higher, so... Everything else? Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes, on everything, but abstain on CC4.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
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 Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Abstain on CC2.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Back to... Yeah, it's claims, thank you, Councilwoman.
Director Stratton, 25-01323. U-line, wire mesh can, $8,464. I'm hoping there's more than one can.
You got to let me catch up on...
Oh, I'm sorry.
What page?
It would be under, I think, Parks and Rec... Sorry. Go down a couple pages while I get onto the website.
Okay, go ahead.
You find... Did you see it?
Yeah, the description is not for the number. I can have Diana pull the...
Director Aviles, can you...
I'll look it up right now. Just give me a second.
You want to come back to this, Council President, while he's looking?
Okay.
What's the number of the claim?
2501323, U-line. It just says can. So I'm concerned we're paying $8,400 for it.
I don't think it's an $8,000, it's a single can.
Listen, crazier stuff has happened in government.
You want the director to come up? Director?
I'll look it up.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was going to see if he pushed... Can we come back to it?
We'll come back to it.
Well, thank you.
Next up, CA4.
A1.
A1.
I'm sorry, I thought that that's what was... A1.
That's what you meant.
Thank you for all your help.
Council President, really, just for a vote.
Okay. Mr. Farina, for A1, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Excuse me, Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CA4, resolution authorizing the city to request data from PSEG in connection with Hoboken's Community Solar Renewable Energy Program. Councilwoman, no, that was not...
No, President... Councilman President, I'm me.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Gonzalez. I read this one. This may be protocol, however, we're getting... When we're getting people's information for... To do studies and things like that, my concern is that that's... That information falls into potentially wrong hands, or... I'm also very concerned about protecting people's... What's the right word?
Privacy.
I'm sorry?
Privacy.
Yeah, privacy. So can you explain this a little bit to me? Because it did, for me, just... I understood what they're... What you're trying to do. However, in light of what's happening in the world today of how privacy stuff works, we now have taken the data from them and now sits on our information, our servers. Again, please educate me on it.
Yes, so that's actually exactly why this is before you, so that we can sign a nondisclosure agreement to ensure that that data is kept private and not subject to any, you know, potential Oprah or anything like that. This data actually goes straight from PSEG to our energy agent. It is standard practice, and it is treated as highly confidential. It's bill payer data.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one... Sorry, one last one. Apologies on the backend of this. This was an automatic opt-in? I was reading...
This is an opt-out.
It's opt-in. It's opt-out.
It's opt-out.
So if you reckon... If one of these individuals, let's say Mr. Smith, is recognized from your data that you got from PSEG?
Yep.
Automatically, you put him in this program, correct?
Yep.
And is there a financial implication for that individual?
Yeah, actually, it's a cost savings for that individual.
They'll get something.
Yes. It's going to be a discount on their bill. I will get back to you with all that information, if I could at a...
Yeah, that's fine, at a later time. I just want to make sure that we're not... Because we have enough problems when we do the electricity, the phone calls we get up here. I want to make sure that this isn't a positive thing?
Yep. I will follow up with you, but yeah, I'm 99% certain it's opt-out, and it's done directly through their energy bill. If it is not, I will correct that and tend to you.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, just one follow-up question to that. Is there an end date that would change the rate? So, for example, after two years, there's a significant increase to the rate, where that's the problem that we ran into with some of these opt-out programs in the past, where there might have been a small cost savings upfront, but once it reached its maturity, then there was a big increase in rate.
No, because then you'd be sent back to the utility. Like, you'd go right back to PSEG if the program were to end. But I will confirm the timing. To your question of how long is the program, I will confirm the timing.
Yes, please, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Farina?
Mr. Cohen?
Before?
Aye.
Fisher? Jabour?
Yes. Yes. The only pause is... Did someone... It sounded like someone wanted to ask a question.
Guys, I'm...
We'll come back. We'll come back. It's not... This isn't for you. This program's not for you, anyway. It's a very specific program.
So I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Farina.
Yeah, sorry.
Could you just continue with the vote?
I'm a yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Did you get everyone, Jimmy?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
The claim was for 12 garbage cans and 50 lids.
Say it again?
12 garbage cans and 50 lids.
50?
50 lids.
Okay.
12 cans and 50 lids.
Well, that's the ones that you push in. It's the...
Thank you. Do we want to vote on claims now?
Hold on. Yeah, it's fine.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote on claims. On claims, we were waiting for an answer.
On the claims, Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay. CD5, yes. Councilman Fisher?
Yes. Is Director Brown still here?
No, he left.
Do you know?
I believe.
Okay, can you... Can you explain it? Do you mind coming up and explaining kind of what this is? Thanks.
So this is a resolution of intent to fund the shortfall, if there is any shortfall of affordable housing compliance mechanisms. There's several affordable housing compliance mechanisms in the housing element and fair share plan. One of those is inclusionary housing, which does not require anything from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That will likely cover our entire obligation of 126 units. However, we want to ensure that the other mechanisms are creditworthy. And so, as Wendy mentioned earlier, you know, any 100%...
Can you get... Just can you give an example? I mean, we're agreeing to bond for a shortfall. So like, what would be an example of what we're bonding for?
So we have a rehab program, the housing improvement program. We have affordability assistance program, and the inclusionary projects. And so, these programs are... Will, in all likelihood, be funded by our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We don't foresee any...
And what's the reason for doing this? Is it a requirement for the plan? So it's a check-the-box issue that we probably won't ever use? Okay. That's the... That was what was missing from the whereas clause. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote for CD5.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CC1.
CC1.
Chipmunk Charlie.
Councilman Russo. Councilman Russo, is that... DC1?
Charlie Charlie. You were right.
Charlie Chapman?
The other challenged one.
Okay.
Director Stratton, or...
Corporation counsel.
Can you tell me what this is for? Is this a particular case, or is this just a general?
Sure, so this is CC1. This was on your last agenda, and the clerk sent you an email on June 12th at 12:01 PM? That would be Thursday. When I say you, the entire council received an email. So these attorneys handling three different cases, and you were given little summaries of the cases.
Yeah, I just want to make sure from that. No, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's one I wanted to make sure. One other... While I have the moment. By the way, Rose, on some of these, because we don't have a budget passed, there's pieces that get dumped into each increase, you'll notice on the agenda, so it's not as if, over the past three weeks, we did this. If we had a budget in the beginning of the year, it'd be one lump sum kind of up to, just so you know that... I know you... I know we haven't seen... we haven't seen, I know we haven't seen you in a while, but this was, this was brought up at another meeting. So, just to let you know.
Thank you, Councilmen. Ms. Frina, CC1, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Mr. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Hi.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi. P1. Not to be confused with the other P1.
Council President, every time I tried to pull this up online, for whatever reason, it wasn't coming up. Could you, Director, could you give me a quick, brief synopsis of what we're doing here?
Director Aviles.
Good evening, Council. This is a licensing agreement with RRX LLC. That is the parent company that MLFSCO belongs to. This service would just put us in an agreement so that we'd be able to tap into their services, which includes any sort of coaching training, the ability to tap into their resources for scholarships, that they would provide our community for members that wanted to be part, participants that wanted to be part of our soccer program, could not afford it. There is sponsorship, scholarship offered through them. Also, uniforms. They would provide the city with some uniforms. Granted, that would be, we would have to procure the best cost option and weigh that out. So, there is no cost to the city. It's simply just being able to tap into their services.
There's no change from what we've done in the past with them?
No. This is just so that we can add in additional resources.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Frina, P1, please call the vote.
That'd be Mr. Stratton.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Hi.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi.
Everybody, turn and look. That's Caleb Stratton.
But did I?
Just make sure everybody, everyone sees him.
There's several people, yeah.
Okay. I didn't mention Freeman.
I did before.
Go to the videotape.
Oh, got it.
T2.
That's, that would be me.
Yes.
And T3, so.
You want to take both of them?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, we'll have Director, Director Webb, if you can. Yeah, can we discuss, Council President, is it okay to discuss both of them, and then we vote them?
Yes, we can vote together. Thank you.
Can you explain T2 to me a little bit, a little bit more?
So, we're applying for a grant from NJDOT to fund a segment of the bike, the green circuit.
Okay.
That would, the segment that we're funding here would be Newark Street from the bowtie down to the merge with Jersey Avenue.
Bowtie.
Bowtie, where Newark and Observer intersect.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And then, T3. I mean, this one's pretty explanatory. I get it, but as long as I have you up here, I was going to keep you up here. Do you know what we spent last year? Sorry to put you on the spot. I'm going to guess you don't know.
I can, I can find it out for you.
The year before that, and the year before that. So, I'll give you a quick hint. I remember voting on this last year. It was about $50-something thousand. This year, it's $67,000 for more of those hideous delineators. It takes the quaintness of our town away. I can't stand them. There's not one truck that doesn't drive over it, including city vehicles, including the UPS truck, FedEx, Amazon, you name it. And now, cars are getting a little more aggressive with these things and rolling over them. They're pulled out of the ground. We're spending another $67,000. I know we can't put up metal cement barriers. However, you're going to tell me it's the cheapest thing to do, to do daylighting, and I'm going to say to you, city bike stations on the corners for daylighting would be a better thing because nobody's going to take out a city bike station. Not saying on every corner, but I'm really against the delineators. It takes away from the quaintness of our town. We have eye pollution on every corner. Our streets are tight. I struggle a little bit with certain things. Is there another option than getting plastic or a delineator that can be rolled over? Is there something where we can, street by street, trouble areas where we actually put in nice, heavy things that you're never going to park in that area for?
Well, as we redesign our streets, and as we go through reconstruction, our intent is to build out daylighting with curb, and then either install bike racks, city bike facilities, green infrastructure. Those are permanent. They're certainly much more attractive. I would agree with you 100%. The delineators are an interim measure, and it's my hope that we build out the Division Zero network, and eventually, we don't need any more of them.
Okay. I'm not in favor of buying more delineators. I mean, just going to let you know. I think it looks like garbage. They're all over the place in the first ward. And in some cases, they're actually put in the wrong spots where sightlines are not impeded. In other words, that could be a loading zone that could be used for some of my businesses or some of my residents who are struggling to, to even just drop off groceries or drop off their grandmother. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of these things, and I will, I will never be going forward.
Understood.
Thank you, Councilmen. I, and that, for T2 and T3, do you want to have two separate votes?
No, that's fine. Answer.
Okay, Mr..
Wait, hold, well, I don't know. Up to the council, not to me.
Well, that's fine. Then, we can, you can always vote one way or the other. But we'll do T2 and T2, T3 simultaneously.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, for both.
Fisher.
Yes, for both.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes, for both.
Mr. President Zano.
Yes, for T2, no, for T3.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Russo.
I am both.
What?
President Doyle.
I am both. Thank you.
The ordinance is for introduction.
Yep, you're right. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Chapter 155, Section 155-16, 155-17, 155-20A, 2 of the Hoboken City Code to clarify certain determinations and considerations of rent levelling board and application fees.
Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Fisher.
Yes.
Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Yes, first reading.
Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi.
Ordinance for introduction, opting into the Garden State CPAC program to facilitate the financing of CPAC project.
Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Hi.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi.
Ordinance for introduction, amending Chapter 192, Parking for Persons with Disabilities.
Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Hi.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi.
Ordinance for introduction, amending Chapter 190, Entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Relocate Loading Zone on Hudson Place, Extend Bus Stop Hours on Hudson Street.
Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Fisher.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Hi.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos.
Hi.
Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi. Please switch the order. Go to six, if you would.
Council President, just a point of order. I actually couldn't pull this up either on my computer. The, the one we're actually voting on, Table of Organization.
Oh, okay.
What, what were the changes from the original?
Updated version has been crossed out five captains and makes it to seven. Or, do you mean from the original or from the last version?
From the last version. I'm sorry.
That I don't.
It went from 118 to 114, and it's two, two, two for superiors.
Yeah.
And eight, these are two, two, two additional, and then eight additional patrol.
So, it was only a change from the officers, from 10 to eight in iteration?
Yes.
Yeah. Because it's still two, two, and two for captains, captains, and sergeants.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
An ordinance for introduction, Code of the City of Hoboken, Chapter 59A, entitled Department of Public Safety, Article 2, 59A-8, Establishment of Division to Increase Police Department, Table of Organization.
Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Fisher.
No.
Mr. Jabour.
Yes.
Mr. President Zano.
No.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos. Mr. Russo.
Hi.
President Doyle.
Hi. Just take a, just a moment, and the number five in, no, yep. Just a second. Do you want me to read it, Jimmy?
Okay.
Okay, hang, yeah, just hang on for a sec.
Introduction on Authorizing a Financial Agreement Between the City of Hoboken and JB112 Urban Renewal LLC.
Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
Fisher.
Present.
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 Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Hi.
Mr. Cetero.
Hi.
Mr. Ramos. Mr. Russo.
Hi, sorry.
President Doyle.
Hi. Public portion. Yes. Are you all, are you?
Ramos.
Yeah, he, he.
Ramos.
Enrique Herrera for public portion.
I am she.
Sugar. It could be sugar. Give me some more water. I want more. No, I have some water.
Do we know if Councilman Ramos has some of that?
Pardon? Would it, would it be possible to postpone until Councilman Ramos comes back?
Or?
He, he may not be back, so. Okay. Well, well, this is in response to more of my advocacy against Neuralinks and illegal use of advanced technology without any risk management. I, Enrique Herrera, have never recovered from the betrayal of my life and its horrors. Yet, I am unbowed in terms of protecting the innocent, in terms of, from AI rape material and Neuralink airdrops of that material into the minds of anyone that's either innocent or guilty. I think it's very important that I reiterate this, you know, with the police and chief police over here as well, that, you know, I make it something of a statement that this Neuralink technology is real. It has advanced to a degree where it is as advanced as it possibly could be with the inclusion of airdrops of any visuals or auditory dialogue or any type of real-time communication, which would be faster than the walkie-talkies that even the police officers have. This is something that I was very much critical of, and I was very much hypercritical of in the prior public portions. I, I was able to really bring that into a conversation of marvel and bring that into speed where this advanced technology didn't necessarily just pop up overnight. But the lack of risk management makes us, it makes it impossible for us to actually catch what this technology is about, which involves numbers, fingers, and magnets, which is something that I would have to elaborate with the council members in different settings. Of course, this doesn't really give me much time to really go into it. So, when I personally created and utilized an AI timeline against prediction scale model systems, I did so with the intent to only have real time, which would eliminate any and all orchestration or prediction scale of any act that could be committed against a female, which would be something that a woman should look into. I do go into it into my social media accounts. I understand that that's something now a lot of people do look at. I have been shadow banned. I have been more or less not looked at in any way, shape, or form on my social media. This came about with the AI deep fake stuff at Island Spa and Sauna, somewhere I worked at, and was a primarily female, you know, run establishment with the management being female. I did the best I could, but it's really hard to explain that to women when you're the minority male in the situation, where it doesn't come off as anything other than off-putting and has to be done professionally. You are shifting through complex evidence and stuff like that. In terms of the addition, the addition of the 24 walkies, which is pretty much what was listed in P2, 24 portable police radios, yeah. We have to be mindful of this same exact technology, the Neuralinks and stuff like that, superseding that technology, where people have the heads-up prior to a police call. People have this technology when they wake up in the morning, all the way to when they go to sleep. Neighborhood watch, PBAs, PSOAs, that don't conduct themselves properly with numbered systems in a microgrid, usually leave all what's left as discrepancy work for the police to pick up. So, if we can just get, just an inquiry going around town, maybe even in the wards, of how neighborhood watch is conducted with police oversight, I didn't get a chance to explain this at the CAPS meeting, but if in the event this technology is faster than these walkies that you're bringing in, that, that just doesn't, that doesn't fix the problem of police officers not getting to the crime on time, where if it's left to civilians, there would be discrepancies regardless. So, I support the P2 agreement with the new walkies and the money geared toward the police officers. What I think we should do is open up an inquiry into Neuralinks and malicious use of that in our civilian populations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Matthew McCowan. Alan Welner.
Good evening. My name is Alan Welner, First Street. I just want to mention that I've been involved in kayaking in Hoboken for maybe 30 or 40 years. Several clubs that we've, that we've formed have helped put kayaking in the north end of Hoboken, in Sinatra Park, and also in Jersey City in a few places. The reason I'm up here is because of something that we saw on the 5th of June, about a week and a half ago, at Pier C. Someone jumped into the water there. There was a police response. When I was there, there were perhaps 14, 15 different boats, New York City Police, New York City Fire, New York City Police Department helicopter. There was a big, big response to try to find this individual. I was there for about an hour. There were people on PRA trying to find this person. So far, at this point, Chief Ferranti tells me that there's been no sign of this individual. I've been here perhaps three or four times in front of different councils, going back probably 20 years. Also, written some letters to the editor when there used to be physical papers. On this particular point, which I'm about to bring to your attention, I have some pictures of PRA and the area around PRA. There's no place to get out of the water from the terminal all the way up to Maxwell House, except for Sinatra Park, which has a launch about 1999, in between administrations, where we were able to put that access to the river. It's been used by kayakers, but also by emergency traffic, people who need to get in and out of the water. And it's probably saved some lives. I asked Chief Ferranti just a while ago, how many events, how many people go into the water on our waterfront? And if I recall what he said, he said perhaps 10 or 12 per year, and half of them don't come out alive. There's no place to save yourself. There's no place to grab, to hold on. That river is a moving river, changes direction twice a day. And when it goes at full speed, it's three or four knots. You cannot swim or even kayak against it. If there's no place to hold on, there's not much you can do. There was a life preserver down at the light rail station on the railing. I don't know if it's still there, but let me just hand these out.
Tim, carry it.
Please, you can hang on to these. Thank you for telling me this is getting out of water. The bulkhead is 10, 12, 15 feet high. It's very slippery, and there are no handholds for about a mile. So, what I was suggesting, perhaps Chief Ferranti can give you a number, but with 15 emergency responders in boats, a helicopter, for that one hour that I was there, it has to be tens of thousands of dollars, maybe more. It's hard for me to imagine what that number is, but imagine doing that 10 or 12 times a year. You're talking about an absurd amount of money, and we're talking literally about life and death. One thing that I suggested, 10 years ago, was something like this, hanging off that bulkhead every 100 yards or so. This is nylon or polypropylene rope with a couple of handholds that would allow somebody, if they wanted to, to save themselves. It would cost anywhere between perhaps $1,000 or $2,500, more or less, to do that along the waterfront, so that if somebody, somebody wanted to, they could, if they jumped in, they could change their mind and save themselves. Or on some of the weekend evenings where alcohol is involved, somebody might be able to save themselves. So, as I said, this is the third or fourth time I've presented this in front of the Hoboken Council, and it seems to me that it's the simplest thing to do. Take a look at that construction that's going along Sinatra Drive now. That's a huge, huge project, millions, many millions of dollars. So, if we can just do the simple things, I, if it's possible, I'd like to leave this here, just so you can see it. You can do whatever you like. But when you see the size of that gap, you'll realize that no one can do any. Most people who drown are good swimmers. So, it's not a matter of being a good swimmer. Just, just keep it in mind if you can. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Cheryl Phallic. Patricia Waiters.
Yep.
No.
I have a few things I'm going to speak off on Agenda Island. What I was speaking to on C, on CA4, what we was trying to get your attention, Paul, with, I lived in a plot housing, and I was affected by this. That's why, thank you, Council President, for saying they should protect our name or identity or whatever. What happened was, I got this huge bill, but they already utilized my name and number at PSCNG and already had changed me into this program. Margaret O'Brien came to all of you guys, a few other people in her building. I lived at 1233 Park, and I also lived at 1219 Willow. This seemed like such a scam, because they can't let you catch help. I couldn't imagine the poor senior citizens that's locked in their house, and I was told, if you don't want it, you come down here and sign yourself out of it. First of all, who told you to put me the hell in it? And they gave me such a hard time. I kept getting bill after bill after bill till it got up to a little over $1,000. And by the time I tried to fight this, the city of Hoboken, your mayor, said this is okay. And there was supposed to be this flyer in everybody's box saying that they was going to change or offer you, do you want this energy program? So, I don't know what language is in this. Oh, my God, y'all are so rude. I'm getting my extra time, too. People noticing this, this watching this. When I talk and it's something y'all don't, see how rude Mr. Cohen is right now? You see?
Patricia.
No, no, no. That's disrespectful to me. You're going to respect me. All right, you finished?
I'm done.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm serious. People watches this, and they notice. There's a difference when it come to Patricia Waiters. Let me get my point across, because this is serious. And I notice if stuff not affecting you. And I notice if stuff not affecting you guys sitting up there, you give us the blank look. I don't care. And what that last speaker spoke about is real serious. Where people walking around depressed and going down to that river, work with Mr. Ferranti and get that done, because it's serious. And now I'm back to PSCNG before I was rudely interrupted by Fifth Ward Councilman Phil Cohen. And you two on the first ward, so don't go there, because I was talking to you. We asked you the question when you mentioned PSCNG. And now I was stuck with not only the bill, I had to go through hell to try to sign out of this program that I didn't want to be in anyway. And they got access in the database to all our information. Clarification purposes, Ralph. That's why I didn't get that out. And this one here that I was asking Ruben about. I'm sorry, when I come late, you need to give people time with this agenda. The shortfalls, and he's not even here. When he says shortfall, this was last meeting we talked about. The building they supposed to relocate people in the Housing Authority and start building in the garage in that parking lot, am I right? And start building in the parking lot. I want this one and another one, Affordable Housing CD2, talking about affordable housing, capital improvement and money or whatever. I want you guys to do me a favor, meet with Chief Ferranti, again on this Director Ferranti, and discuss bringing back the Officer Next Door program. It was a program for retired cops, cops, correction officers, where they could live here in Hoboken and on watch 24 hours, they gotta sign a contract. Just visit that language. And if you want me to, I'll get it for you. And take that into consideration, having our police officers stay here in town, provide a place for them to stay, and they get like a discount or whatever to live here if they live in the unit for free. Okay? Could you guys please look and work into that? I promise the cops, every time I see them on the street, because rent is getting outrageous. Now, boxing glove time. Listen, again, real quick and I'm gonna wrap it up, because that man talked 22 minutes. We have an election again approaching, okay? When all of y'all just voted no, I'm sorry, but one of y'all, not you, Tiffany. For those white cones that's sitting in the street, I work at Demerit School. I sit there in my desk, watching the cameras and watch the delivery trucks, the cab drivers, Lyft, Uber, park on those cones like they not even there. They back right up in their vehicles, because I come out and put my cones out. They back right into them cones. Those cones is not only hazardous, I see baby carriages being pushed over there and the baby fall out the carriage, little kids on their bike tripping over them. Our town was perfectly fine. And the young man, no disrespect to him, he don't live here. Stop saying, well, our city streets are coming to be what? We live here, okay? And we lived here long enough to know that's a waste of money, guys. Please, start thinking about, yes, it is a waste of money, because they parked there anyway. God bless the soul of the little kid that got hit by the truck, like with those things being there.
Backward.
That's, that's, that's true. That's good. But see, listen to me. It's not, listen, Mr. Cohen, it's a bad thing to put those there too? Because now what if somebody, not that new haul truck that hit that guy. If another truck was there, you can't see for real. And the mothers still try to maneuver around it. I sit there six hours a day straight and see how dangerous it is. And these cars is from New York and everywhere else, to park on those things is very dangerous. So when you make a mistake, just say it incorrectly, get them out of here. We didn't have them before. But now in this election season, and I'm telling you guys again, congrats to all of y'all. Y'all could come out and grandstand and do all of that. Don't do it at our meeting time. Seriously, I know it's a bit much, Mr. Doyle, but please, could you get on your colleagues to respect us and respect our time?
I'm doing the best I can, Pat.
No, well, keep on doing it. I'm with you, but that's not fair to us, because I'm not interested in none of this stuff that people trying to impress us out here, because it's an election time.
I know. All right.
It's not, it's nerve-wracking and I sit here and I'm being very nice. And I'm trying to respect you. I'm wrapping it up with saying this. Please, work with Mr. Ferranti on that and I really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferranti's been promoted back up to the chief, apparently. Manuel Rivera Soler.
I, I still call him chief.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council, members of the public. Council President, if you noticed my absence earlier, I was planning not to speak, but due to certain incidents that have occurred, I, I am, and I am here. And I just want to say, first off, before I say my remarks, I'm gonna keep up my member of the public, being the consoler of the council. I just want to say again, it's very tragic that we, as Americans, have to continue to see violence bestowed upon innocent people. We, the members of the public, just want everybody, would like everybody, pardon me, to be civilized and to have civil discussions and never resort to violence. Now, like us, if you can, again, Council President, as you always do, and members of the council, members of the public, if you can please help me in joining and sending our thoughts and our prayers and our best well wishes to the families of Representative Hartman of Minnesota and Senator, State Senator Hoffman's family for their speedy recovery. Ms. Hotsman or Mrs. Hotsman was killed and her husband. So I would hope that we could be civil and understand that violence, again, as I said last meeting, is not the answer to our differences. And with that, Council President, I will continue. Now, as a member of the public had mentioned, we, we, we just came off a, a primary election that was contested and we got the results of that. And now we're going into the season of Hoboken elections. And I didn't think I was gonna say this so early in the process, but I want to say through you, Council President, to all members of the public, but especially the members of the public of the Sixth Ward, as I am a resident of the Sixth Ward, I ask all members of the public, that is, to discern, to discern for themselves and to make sure that when a candidate or candidates approach you or knock on your door, for those who are still old-fashioned who knock on doors like myself, ask them, ask them the question, especially if you're a member of the Sixth Ward. What have you done for the Sixth Ward? Why did you not give the Sixth Ward a voice in December? And now you are promoting candidates who nobody knows, were not involved, or though well, perhaps intentioned. Well-intentioned. And everybody does have the right to run, to put their hand in the ring to anything. That I am in agreements with. My beef is, or my concern is, that now we get these phantoms, we get these ghosts, candidates from the past, those that only come when it's in their best interests. And they do not, they do not want to do anything else, just only on election time. Once the election is over and they lose, they are gone. So I ask once again, all of the Sixth Ward residents, all of those that I go, come across, and all residents of Hoboken, do your discernment, please. Allow them to ask, answer those questions to you. That's all I'm saying, if you so wish to ask them. Again, everybody has the right to run. Everybody has the right to serve their municipality or their city or their states or wherever they want to serve. But again, I know it's early in the contest. I'm sure I'll be back. But I appreciate the council for listening, the members of the public. And again, I want to thank you for asking and taking apart a lot of the questions or a lot of the ordinances and resolutions here on Consent Agenda. Because I did it as a little experiment to see if you would, if all of you would and members of the public would ask questions. And I want to say you passed, because you did ask many questions. And members of the public appreciate that. So again, I don't want to take up much time. I have said my point. We should be civil with each other. We disagree agreeably. And with that, Council President, I say, let's continue to pray for the hostages, the release of the hostages, and for the innocent civilians now in Israel going through something else, and the innocence of Gaza. And with that, Council President, God bless you. God bless you all. God bless Hoboken. And always, slava Ukraini, glory to Ukraine, herojem slava, glory to the heroes. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera.
Alex Garcia.
Okay. All right, because there's four different.
Good evening, Council. Alex Garcia, Sixth Ward. I want to thank Paul for the T3 Pesco declimate. I think it's the worst idea ever. It has taken so many space, parking space, delivery space. I mean, I actually tried to drop off my son at the barber shop on 7th and 6th and, I think it's Jeff, Jefferson, I think it was, taper and tonic. And I got to do the circles just to drop off my son. And they put him in that corner. So I'm not sure if that was a part of the whole Vision Zero. I'm not sure. Was that part of Vision Zero? I'm not sure. But if it is, I'm totally against it and I thank you for going against it from this point forward. Because I think it's the worst idea ever. I mean, I don't know about you, but I know how to cross the street. I've taught my kids how to cross the street, both ways. I mean, that's the first rule of thumb. But you falling down, cross the street, right? So basically, if you're trying to make space or make it safety hazard, make it safety, people cross the street, that's the worst idea, because you take away parking space. Hoboken's biggest issue is parking or drop off or whatever the case may be. Thank you, Paul, for going against it from this point forward. Secondly, the electrical charging stations, I think they become a personal parking spot now for electrical cars, apparently. Because I have one in front of them, right in front of them, 6th and Washington. They just park there. Go in there, I park right behind them, go in there, they park and they leave the cars without even charging it. So I see, I actually saw one, there was two. One I was charging, the one just parked his car. And I actually was in a car, on my car making a phone call. I was in the car, I didn't want to get out of the Bluetooth. And I see there's all the electrical waiting there, standing there, the guy like, oh my God. It became, and it's not the first, it's happened two times already, where it became a personal parking space for these electrical cars. That's two. Three. Friday or Saturday night, it was 1:00 in the morning, I got home and I see a guy walking in front of my building, 6th and Wash. And, I mean, he was coming back from a Mets game, a little intoxicated, whatever the case may be. I see him and it was going on. And he's like, my phone's not, my phone's dying. And I'm like, let me help you. What's going on? Long story short, his car, he thinks, got towed. So he was parked illegally in the parking station, right? So now I go ahead and like, you know, are you okay? Can you describe your car? Do you know anything about your car? It was a little off. So I started, I started making a phone call. I contacted the useless HPU. I contacted them and voicemail, 1:00 in the morning. So I, the next thing I did, I called the police department for him. This is the patrol car, very helpful, very courteous. I have, they saw I was trying to help the guy out. They were in front of my building and, you know, actually they asked me questions, they asked him questions, of course. And they tried to get information with his license plates, information. Whatever the case may be, they went far beyond. And they were to, they were able to, they were able to see that the car was not towed on their end. But then they said, but it doesn't mean that it wasn't towed. It could have been the electrical company from the EV who towed the car. So like, what do you mean? So I mean, like, how are you guys not gonna know this? If a car gets towed, Hoboken Police Department should know. Any car gets towed, they should know. Like, no, we don't know everything. We don't know, if another company towes it, they'll tow it and that's it. We won't know it. That's unacceptable. I have a drug man in front of my house, loitering, not loitering, but like helpless. And I'm trying to help the guy out and he doesn't know if his car got towed or not. And at this point, his phone is dead. I call his mom. His mom's coming from Paramus. So I'm staying in front of him, she's, she begged me, please stay with him. Lo and behold, I stayed with him till like almost like 2:30 in the morning, waiting for his mom to come to go pick him up. So I mean, I was there, the fact that he told me, the police department told him that, that he has to come back on Monday. It's happening like on the weekend. So to get any detailed information from HPU, they had to wait till Monday. That's unacceptable. He has no information if the car got towed or stolen. Well, he said it wasn't towed. So he doesn't know if the car was stolen. It was stolen, great, we understand it, but the fact it was towed, if a company towed it, it has to come from, you guys, they need to know. That's why I say HPU is hopeless and worthless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. No more members of the public signed up to speak?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close?
Second. Aye.